Okay, six o'clock's time to call the order of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I'll ask Robert to give the indication and John Hunter to give the pledge. If you would, all please stand.
Everybody would bow before you. Heavenly Father, we come in and out, Lord, so thankful for this day. Thank you for allowing us to meet here, Father, concerning citizens and applicants and the board here. Father, we ask that you guide our decision tonight, that it be beneficial to all present, the community here in Mount Pleasant, all its residents. We ask for your protection as we leave this place tonight, watch over and guide our daily lives, direct our steps, and we give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and clear to the end of this world.
Let the minute show that everyone's present in line for the meeting. Item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda tonight.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number four, approval of minutes, prior meeting, February the ninth, 2021.
I make a motion, we approve those minutes.
Have a motion.
Second.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five, Robert, I'm gonna turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Chairman, all present, all in attendance tonight. First item on our agenda is for a plat approval, final plat approval. This is being presented to the board tonight from owner Alan Blevins, who is present in the audience along with his surveyor of records. They are requesting, he is requesting a final plat approval for property located in the corner of North Main Street and Sugar Creek. Those not familiar with it, we're talking about the Williams family home situated. The purpose of this request is to re-subdivide that property into one parcel, the way it's situated now, into three separate parcels. One being identified on the plat as lot one, big smaller lot that we're discussing right at the edge of North Main Street, we'll be discussing that first. Of course, the second lot being that where Williams family home is situated, third lot being a back portion there. We have submitted comments to the board in regards to this. We all, if you had a chance to read those comments, is this lot in particular is situated in the highway commercial zone here in the city of Mount Pleasant. And I've discussed the current use of that lot at this time, third lot being a vacant lot, first lot being small lot that has an ATM sitting on it, and then the second lot being the front lawn. I'd like to discuss just our comments with the board.
Just fine.
And just present the findings from our review. On lot one specifically, front northeast corner, point zero three acres, three thousand four hundred eighty-four square feet. The Mount Pleasant zoning ordinance, section seven three, requires a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet, minimum lot width of hundred feet, front setback twenty, side setback zero to twenty adjacent residential and twenty for the rear setback. The way this is currently configured on this plat, buyer's zoning ordinance and our sub regs, the lot would not meet the minimum bulk regulations set forth in the zoning regulations. Also speaking of lot one, Mount Pleasant sub regs, section one dash one oh eight point one, gives direction for re-subdivision stating any such application shall come before this board and shall abide by the subdivision rules for subdivision. That's why it's being presented as it is tonight. Mount Pleasant subdivision regs also in section four dash one oh two dash one requires that a lot arrangement shall be such that no foreseeable difficulty shall be present that will prevent a lot from being buildable in relation to the zoning ordinance. Mount Pleasant sub regs, section four dash one oh two point two, requires that lot dimensions shall comply with the zoning ordinance, and the dimension of the corner lot shall be large enough for a range of buildings, observing the minimum front yard setbacks from both public roads. And as you know, it's situated, lot one speaking, is situated on two road fringes. You have Sugar Creek Lane and then you have North Main as well. Our findings, lot one is substandard to our zoning regs and our subdivision regs. The ATM can exist as a legal non-performing use, but it doesn't appear a need to create this particular lot for any other purpose out. You know, the advocate can speak to that more so than I can, but currently as it's platted, it does not meet the sub regs or the zoning regs for bulk regulation or standards for lot. We ask that they please remove that from the plat and not identify the side of the lot based off of those findings. Unless anybody has a question, I'm just gonna quickly move on to lot three and the findings.
Let me, let me, let me ask you, on that lot one there, it goes away being, it could always be rezoned back in the plat two.
Uh, yeah, sure. If the ATM goes, if the ATM was to be pulled and that wasn't being used as an ATM.
I mean, it wouldn't have no other use there other than they would come back and say, we're gonna have to.
That's correct. Yes, sir. They would have to include that in some form or fashion to lot two to even make it usable lot. Because the way it's currently platted, if they, you try to picture it without the ATM there, it don't make both things.
Right now, our, your issue is that it's not big enough to meet our subdivision requirements.
Or the zoning.
And I think the owners want to speak towards about what if it sells to different parties that own different parcels.
And, you know, like I said, just try to picture it without the ATM there, and at that point, it becomes a nonusable lot. It can't be built on without something being done, brought back before this board to.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No problem. Any more questions on lot one that you want to discuss right now at this point, the board?
I'm ready on board. I'll go ahead.
I'll go ahead with lot three. Lot three, being farther from North Main here, opposed near lot above Sugar Creek subdivision to the west, one point one nine acre, eight acres, Apriline fifty-one thousand six hundred twenty-five point four square feet. According to subdivision regs in section four one oh two point two, it states that where lots are more than double the minimum, which is twenty thousand square feet, the planning commission can require that such lots be arranged so as to follow, so as to allow public subdivision in the openings of future public roadways, future ways, public ways, where there would be necessary to provide access to such potential lots. In other words, the zoning ordinance, the sub regs actually speak to this. If it's more than double the lot size, the planning commission has the authority, has the full authority to require that lots be delineated for future re-subdivision of that third lot because it's over double the minimum size. Also to include ingress and egress, appropriate those in the design. Y'all can require that, you do not have to require that.
But that's something that would have to come back.
That's correct. Inside, in any, in any development right there on lot three, it would have to come back before this board anyway.
Okay.
That's just an allowance that our subdivision regs give the board. Also, some additional comments pertaining to the plat in itself, where we requested the surveyor delineate easement associated with overhead electric, which they did, they did answer that, and you can see that identified on the plat. Also indicated them that the parking is located in a public utility, utility district easement. If the city, you know, ever needs to utilize that easement where it was existing because of that lot line between two and three, it would affect parking lot of Williams family home, because you had five foot on one side, five foot on the other. So we simply asked them to move that line, adjust that lot line, so that parking lot's not including that easement. And they did appropriate that on the plans as well by taking the lot line and repositioning that lot line to show ten-foot easement completely on lot three, no easement on lot two. So they did correct that. The plat before you tonight still is indicative of three lots. We had lot one, two, and three as discussed. I've spoken with the surveyor, and I've spoken, I've spoken with the surveyor on a couple of occasions in regards to the comments and stuff, and they are aware of the concerns for lot one, speaking specifically to lot one. And they are present here tonight to speak and answer any questions the board may have. I will interject that outside of lot one, the comments not being addressed, the other comments, specifically the last ones that we just discussed, were addressed on the plat, and it is conforming in that respect. Lot one still is not conforming.
I understand, I understand.
Does Will have anything?
I mean, we do have our contract planner who's on Zoom, and if y'all have any particular questions to Mr. Hager, he would be glad to answer those as well.
Hey, everyone, good seeing you.
Hey, Will. How you doing?
All right. I think Robert did a great job explaining the concerns around lot one. The issue about lot three is something to give some thought to. You know, the access is really what that provision tries to help with, so that you can identify where that access should be at this stage instead of trying to shoot horned around a future development. So I would give that some thought, but as Robert mentioned, it's something you can do, but you don't have to, it's not required. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to help.
We have any, go ahead.
I'm sorry, one other thing that I did want to mention, and I called it late, I apologize, Mr. O'Leary. I don't think all the certificates are shown on the final plat, the nine one one specifically. All of the plat certificates that are identified on the plat that are required, there's only one missing, and that's for the nine one one approval.
Is anyone here to speak on, on this plat approval? Come forward, state your name, please.
I'm Alan O'Leary with WS Engineers and Surveyors. I just wanted to give you, kind of let you know why he was wanting to take that parcel and make it a parcel. He's doing, you know, future planning for himself and trying to, you know, get things in order in case some, you know, with all the COVID stuff going around, everybody's kind of like scared, you know? But I hope he lives forever, but, you know, that's beside the point. It's trying to get things into a trust, and then the bank has approached him and either renewing the lease or purchasing it type thing. We talked initially, you know, not about it not being a twenty thousand square foot, was hoping you could approve it like that. If not, you know, we would request that you would at least approve the two lot plat with the bigger lots and leave that, we'll leave that corner part of that lot at that point. I'll make revisions and let Mr. Archibald have them, and if we could, whichever way the planning commission wishes to proceed.
Very good. All right, we appreciate your time.
Yeah, I'll be, I'm not going anywhere, I hope. The quarter lot, you know, that is owned by the bank, you know, well, not owned by the street, but me, but they wanted to show this and purchase and lease it. And but, but what we're having to do is sell them twenty thousand square feet, or try to do somewhere to lease back, but permanent was what I was looking for. And I don't want anything else to go there if anything wasn't there. And I told Cory, I had to put a thing against a deed that said, okay, if this ATM or KIA goes away, it goes away, we don't want to put anything back. But, you know, but I don't want, I wanted it separated because I didn't want to sell twenty thousand square feet and use my driveway and half my parking lot for this sixty by sixty spot.
I understand.
And I know it doesn't meet requirement of, if I should have done this in two thousand and eight, and y'all didn't have any. But I should have done it then, and I had to, I'm doing my own preplanning because that's not a part of the operation of Williams, and neither is that lot in the back. I'm separating them out, but it's what I'm doing, but that's what it is. So that's the request, and I know it's not perfect, but that's what it is. But it's not to harm or do anything to property because it won't let anything else be there.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have any other questions from the board?
Got a question for Robert on this lot three.
Yes, sir.
For pre-planning or for future. Well, we got a hundred and seventy-two foot of frontage on Sugar Creek, and you said the minimum is a hundred foot of frontage, so there would be no way to create two lots along Sugar Creek, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir. Each lot, each individual lot had to have that minimum.
So there's really only one lot that can go.
That's correct, yes, sir. I don't know for future development what that may bring, but it's a good sized lot, so it could be, you know, possibly used for some developed purpose in the future. And once again, as Chairman pointed out, any type of development, we have to come back before the planning commission as well, and be reviewed as such.
Right.
But it, to have, would work with two lots. You'd have to have that minimum.
Well, and because of the size of that small lot, like, nothing could ever, if the ATM goes away, nothing could ever be put there anyway, right?
That is correct. If ATM goes away in sixty by sixty, don't meet the bulk standards, so nothing would be put there. But just from my experience in the past, and maybe even, Mr. Hager can speak to this as well, you have lots that have been subdivided and re-subdivided over the years in the past. You have those lots, you're familiar with them, that you can't do anything with them. So if they're passed down through the years, and this is platted, this is a recorded instrument, they're passed down through the years, and over time, people forget, don't realize what's going on, then you've got a dead lot. Then you've got to figure out how to deal with that dead lot if this property is no longer under same ownership or familiar ownership. Then you've got a person that goes and buys this and attacks it because it's sitting there vacant, and comes to my office and says, ready to build. Well, you can't. What do I gotta do? Well, you gotta get some more land. How am I gonna do that? I mean, you run into those issues, that's, you know.
Sure, sure. The one bit certainly is.
I've seen a million of those lots like that, and like I said, Mr. Hager. But the purpose of the zoning ordinance is to, and the subdivision regs, as you well know, is to keep us away from creating something like that that would prevent good use in the future, or land use in the future for that matter, if something happens.
I understand, I understand. What would, he mentioned a two lot configuration, what would that look like?
I would, I would make the assumption, and he can speak to this, I haven't spoken to Mr. O'Leary about it, but I would make the assumption that lot one would simply go away. Is that correct?
That's right. It just, it was the good life, even with Williams family home.
Okay.
Robert, I would tell you personally that if you, if you want to keep the bill done.
Any other questions? Any kind of motion?
Just to chat some light on what Mr. O'Leary said, y'all did have the ability to approve I'll make a motion where you approve his request.
His request.
I have a motion, approved request as requested. You have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Do a roll call on this, please.
As requested.
As written.
Before you vote, as always.
No.
Only concern with the planning commission is make sure that you say out loud why you are making that decision, so whichever way you're voting, you can talk about it out loud, your reasoning for this, it would be, it's not, it's not what's on the large paper.
Yeah, okay.
If you can give a basis for it, it's going to be easier for the minutes, and it makes it a more sound decision.
And that's because it's not specified to be allowed, and so we want to understand why the.
I think the commission has the discretion to make decisions, just to help us make a legal call if you say what the reasons are.
All right. Do the roll call, Kate, please.
Sure.
Commissioner. Well, I have a question. So with, we're passing it with number one being in with number two, not being an independent lot, right?
No. No, the motion was made to, as written.
As written, three lots.
Okay, so you misunderstood that.
No.
Okay.
You withdraw on your second?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second it, too. Have a motion and a second.
Okay. Commissioner Granberry?
Yes.
Port Pugh?
No.
Douglas Marshall?
Yes.
Jennifer Graham?
Yes.
John Hunter?
I'm a no due to the reasons listed by staff.
Move on. Number six, rezoning request, is he with you?
I apologize. Can I speak to Mr.?
Yes, sir. You take your time.
I just had to indicate to you, Mr. O'Leary, that we needed that you take.
Yeah, I understand, that's fine, that's fine.
Of course, are we ready to move on?
Yes, sir, number six.
Number six, as you read on the agenda here, owner Smelter Service Corporation requesting a rezoning of a lot on Zion Road, which is situated parallel to the railroad tracks bordered by Highway forty-three to the west. The property identification is tax mount one eleven, parcel zero thirty-five, later reported in the flat book art twenty-three fifty, lot page one oh two, on file American Register. Reason for this request is potential future use of the property for stores and warehouses, older warehouses. Of course, this came before my office of the rezoning request, we provided comments as to that request. The lot, y'all do have a map of that lot, so know exactly where it's situated. Under our previous zoning ordinance prior to our zoning update in 2018, that was identified as an M one lot. I researched records historically, I can't find when that lot, or if it ever was, rezoned. I made the assumption from the start of my review that at one time it was possibly zoned agricultural, because that was our base zone. But irregardless of that, there's no findings in my research where I could see this being ever rezoned. Our latest, not our latest, but the one right before it was zoned M one, which is lot manufacturer, yes, lot manufacturing, I believe. But that's our old zoning. And when we updated our zoning code, as you know, that property was one that we saw more beneficial as a commercial lot, and we went through their presentation to the public, through all the public hearings that we had, we had several of those, the maps were made available to the general public as such. There were plenty of people that attended those and spoke to different concerns, but during our zoning update, we felt that that lot in particular, because it's close proximity to residential and already existing commercial, in strategically positioned between Highway forty-three, direct access off, and then also Highway two forty-three, having commercial business, so we chose to make that zoning change. We had the authority to do that, we did so. The request before y'all tonight could be from owner Mr. Grisco, I believe is here to speak to that as a representative of the owner. According to Mr. Grisco, and he can speak to this a little bit more, when they originally purchased the lot, I don't know what year that was, he indicated to me that it was zoned M one, and they purchased it with the intent to utilize it for the type of manufacturing. You provided a conceptual drawing as well, that is not a site plan by no means.
Yeah, I know.
That is just indicative of possible use there, that particular lot, according to the owner. As covered in the past, in our comments, speak specifically to this, I'll just hit a couple of high points. Planning commission, I know y'all do realize, Doc, reiterated, if you approve a rezon, understand that it's not just for that use, it's for all permitted uses that comes through that zone. There are several high intensity uses even, including our lot manufacturing site. I know it has railroad access, I know that it's physically off forty-three, so it could be viewed and construed as somewhat important to an industrial user, but also it speaks to good place for commercial activity as well, hence the highway commercial designated mention in our zoning update. It's a twenty-eight, over twenty-eight acres, I believe, without looking back, so corrected, I think it's over twenty-eight acres. But it's a very large lot, has road frontage, situated directly beside a residence, and on the opposite side, closer to forty-three, you have a small non-performing toll lot that has been forebored as zoning appeals, and is currently under, it's constantly under review to make sure it's the most compliant. It also backs directly up to Redwood Circle, which is residential neighborhood as well. And that's the configuration of what you have before you tonight. If y'all have any questions, if you want me to go with comments, I'll be glad to, I'll read them out loud, every one of them, but if y'all are satisfied with staff comments, then, you know, you might have questions with the advocate, or I know there are some people here from the public that is possibly signed up to speak as well. But I'm, I'm working at the.
I'm fine, we'll, we'll, we'll let some, someone speak on behalf of this right now if they like.
Yes, sir.
Can we just at least acknowledge this is unusual, we're kind of learning this pandemic stuff, but we have somebody on Zoom.
That's correct.
That reached out to us that did want to speak one way or another, but they have COVID in the home.
Correct.
And so we've allowed them to be on to speak later, and normally, we haven't figured out how to handle that going forward if there's a lot of people that want to speak, but we had just one, so that's why there's somebody on the Zoom meeting.
We'll let the reps speak first and then.
That's, I believe, yeah.
Just one thing, I just want to point out real quick to the board, I couldn't pull it up to that second lane, and then we'll make predictions, so too much confusion, so in particular, this is our old zoning map before we updated it, and I just wanted to let y'all know. As you can see, one of the reasons I thought that it'd be rezoned in the past is because it's really the only M one lot in that vicinity. You have residential over here, you have highway commercial, C three was considered highway commercial, our old zone, and then you've got residential right here. So just to let y'all know that it was M one historically, I don't know how it got that designation, but it was zoned that way, just sort of way you can see. I apologize if I took it too long, but the lot was shooting that view.
But we changed that all down through there, too.
We did, we changed all the properties, yes, we did. I just wanted to let the board know.
The only history we can find on file.
But now I'll step aside.
Okay, ready, rep?
Thank you, Robert.
Yes, sir.
Left a little bit to say, not much. So a little bit of history of the lot. We purchased it in 2015 from a company called Wisney Holdings or Weasney Holdings, and by the way, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the planning commission for allowing us to make this request tonight. But why, is my understanding that why the holdings had planned to put some sort of a manufacturing operation on that site, and they abandoned the plans for whatever reason? So we purchased it in 2015, as Robert has said, because we had some, we were running out of space and said we need to have an additional warehouse space or additional operational space, and we bought it in 2015. Those plans didn't materialize as quick as we thought they would. Unfortunately, you know, we should have done something right away, it looks like, so. done something right away, it looks like, so. But it didn't. But then we found out, within the last year or two, we started looking at the property again, because we've had some ideas how to expand again. And we noticed that it wasn't zoned industrial anymore. And I got with Robert, and he said it was zoned, the change was made. Kate says we were duly notified. I'm not aware of any notification, but I suppose it was posted in the back of the newspaper once or twice.
No, it was everywhere.
Everywhere.
It was everywhere.
I think it came by the community.
We went through just a year and a half, and, and I mean, everybody was made well aware of what was going on with the zoning change, because, because we knew we'd have stuff like this.
Okay. Well, I don't know why we weren't notified. I think we've done a really good job of notifying neighbors tonight. We'll go on. So let's see what else I can say. But so we request that it get changed back, that used the manner, it was historically zoned for it. And we request that it would be better suited to have something on there for tax bases and for the community than what is now there, just an empty piece of property. I will point out, I've, you know, it is a, this property is .4 miles deep. I'm not sure what you were, what thought was with highway commercial use for that. Typically, I can think of some things that don't have, need a very deep piece of property, maybe, maybe a truck stop is what you had in mind, or maybe a used car lot perhaps. I don't know what's going to use up that property. Let's see. I've looked at the uses under the highway commercial, and I have trouble visualizing how those are going to be a better neighbor or a better use of the property than what we have in mind. It's a manufacturing warehouse.
And you're, you're going to sit here and tell me 100% sure, you're going to tell this board that you're going to put a warehouse out here on this property?
I don't know.
Are you 100% sure that you're going to put a warehouse on this property?
Douglas, what, what I did is I talked to Robert about two or three months ago, and I said, Robert, what's the best thing to do? Should we wait till we're certain what we do and come to the planning commission, or should we ask now? And he said, you should do it now. And I said, okay, we'll do it now. But that makes it easier for us, so that then if we do have a plan, we've got a piece of property we can do something with. It's still got to, I suppose, come back before then.
So, yeah.
So that part still has to come. For instance, you're probably going to request something in the back, like some sort of offer that we didn't draw in there. But, so either I come to you now, or I wait till we have something certain to come back to you. We're here tonight under advice of Robert to do it without that. We do believe it does make use of the railroad property, and I somewhat aware there's not an abundance of rail property in Murray County. And finally, like I said, it takes it back to what it was, we're going to use it for something that was historically zoned for.
Can you spell the Wisne Holdings?
W-I-S-N-E.
Oh, okay, I had it pretty close. And I had it pretty close, and I've talked to Tom as well, and it's kind of the argument of the chicken and the egg, do you decide what you can put there before you know if you can put it there or not? And I get that, it can go either way.
We're going to have to find something else. I mean, we speculate, or we just try to sell and find something else. So that's it. Now, thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Unless there's any questions.
I have none unless the board has some.
Thank you.
This time we won't let someone speak on.
Yes, and we have somebody on.
Yeah, let's go with.
Is there anybody else that can sign up to speak?
We have two, four, five people here.
Okay.
Of all these, this Ms. Reagan is on it here, and we got a Tim Moore, a Jennifer Moore.
Okay.
Shelley Rowland, and Nick Moore.
Would you like to start with the caller?
Let's start with the caller, please.
If you can hear us, Mr. or Ms. Reagan, you want to unmute yourself and speak? There you go.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcome to.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I was going first, I'm not really sure exactly what course of action we should talk about, but the biggest thing is, is I understand that this property was historically zoned as highway, but we personally have lived in our property for 20 years, almost 20 years. And we purchased this from Timmy Moore, who lived there long before we did. We had no intention of living next to an industrial site. We built our house here, we raised our family, we don't, I don't want to live next to an industrial site. There's a lot of industrial, zoned industrial property in Mount Pleasant. I mean, we've spent a lot of money and a lot of assets going for Cherry Glen in Mount Pleasant. These, there's lots and lots of property that's already zoned industrial. I don't understand why we have to take a piece of property that has been long since uninhabited, unimproved, and then we're going to change that to industrial and affect several homeowners. We also don't have the resources here. Zion Road is not equipped to handle industrial dump trucks, traffic, that sort of thing, as well as we, I know that we've been talking about stoplight on Mount Pleasant Highway, but there currently isn't one. I feel it would be dangerous, and basically, we just don't want it.
Ms. Reagan, could you state your address for the, for the board, please?
Yes, sir, we're at 2676 Ryan Road.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't think so. Y'all have any questions for me? You know, that I wasn't super prepared, and I apologize.
No, not, not at the moment. We won't let you speak first.
Yeah, and again, as to the other gentleman had spoke about being notified, we were in fact not notified. I believe that only one property owner was notified, and that would have been Tim Moore, not us. We were never, in fact, we had called the city and asked for this, this was going to take place, and we were told had a later date. So we were in fact not notified. I just wanted to be that clear.
To make it clear that we did exactly what is required within a certain number of feet, people, so they did not need that requirement, but I'm glad.
I understand, but just the gentleman had stated that we did a great job. Well, he wasn't notified as to the change, but we were notified about this, we were not.
Okay, thank you. Tim Moore?
Can we all just come up together? We're all the same family, we all live there.
I don't have a problem with it.
He's better speaking.
No, that's fine.
I'm Jennifer Moore.
All right.
What we bought over there, residential, it was a farm, small farm is what we bought.
What y'all, what y'all add to us? I'm sorry.
2660.
Thank you.
Where do y'all live in comparison to this?
Right beside it.
Right above, okay.
It's like 34 or.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's always been farmland.
It's always been agricultural.
You know, we don't live next door to us. I mean, y'all can see, we've been there, what, 25 years?
A little over 25 years. We've raised our kids there.
And true about the road, it can handle all the traffic.
That's, that's the big thing. I mean, there's already 25 eighteen wheelers that come down there every day when they're not supposed to cut through there to get on the bypass. They do it all the time anyways. It's a two-lane road, there's a school not far down the way, and that road is just not nearly equipped to handle any more traffic. It's already way too busy. It is, it's just about can't get on to, not as highway front line, as it is, you know, and it's just, it's not nearly built to handle more industrial traffic. It's got way too much. My name's Nick, Nick Moore.
Nick, thank you. And this is Shelby Rowland, she's our neighbor, she's Nicole's mom. She lives right beside us. What's your 2670?
2670 is my address.
Shelby. Rowland, R-O-W-L-A-N-D. When we were kids, Frank Harris owned the property, and he farmed it continuously, and I think he's the one that sold it to the company.
This one.
Yes.
Holden or whatever.
Wisne Holdings or whatever it was.
But it was always cut for height.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to come trouble, but I just.
We just don't want it there. That's our backyard and our front yard and our side yard and.
But we're also here for everybody else on Zion Road also.
There's a lot of other people would come, we just come down tonight to.
Understand.
Let y'all know that.
Just ask you to consider it from our point of view, too, please.
There you go.
But the red light is on the way. I've been waiting 18 years since I've been here, and it is on the way.
You're going to get a red light?
Yes, you are.
Maybe he is.
Guaranteed that, yes.
It should be in the next six, eight months.
Yes.
I've been towing a lot, and we do.
That is good.
So the red, red light is on the way.
Possibly later.
Mm-hmm. But the railroad tracks, the road is just bombed out right there where the railroad tracks are from the heavy trucks.
Y'all probably, y'all probably get a lot of the trucks now to the tile plant, I imagine, because through there.
A lot of them cut through there. Except sadly not through, so you're not, there's three trucks for everybody.
Yeah.
Nobody ever goes up to old Zion Road extension, which I feel like is made for eighteen wheelers and big equipment getting on and off the highway, but everybody wants to cut through Zion Road and that, you know, another.
It's low traffic.
Another industrial site there, it's going to mean twice the industrial traffic.
And you catch it on early morning, you know, around seven, eight o'clock when school's in.
Zion Christian Academy.
That's the max.
Wait a minute, Miss Shelby wants to say something. There's really not, even if a car goes past, you can't get to your, you better not go to your mailbox. That's what I was just thinking. You're getting right over. And the ditch, the ditch is probably too deep from the road surface, if that, in different places. I know along my ditch. Yeah, ours is big, too. And then on the other side, in that historical land, though, if they had to, if they had to widen the road, they can't take any of that land, can they? It was where a battle was fought during the Civil War, and it's on a historic road system.
We had, we had to go back and look at that and stuff.
It's on there. That's, it's, it is, but I mean, it's not marked as that, but.
Doesn't impact the zoning.
No, it doesn't, I wouldn't think it would, if it done that.
We'd just like you to continue.
All right, we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Letting us speak, thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome. Anyone else here to speak on this matter? Have any questions from the board? Not anti-motion.
Please identify himself. Do we have somebody else? They're muted now.
Just so the board knows, notification was made. I've got certified letters here.
I understand.
State law says we have to notify the two of the property. And the people here speaking may have not been notified because our properties, by the way, are too complicated. We have sent out a bunch of certified letters, but always notify the two of the previous. And post the property as well as getting.
I hear a motion. I say it does, I'm a lack of a, a motion.
I have to recuse myself from this case because of Smelter. I'm not sure if that's true. I can lift that up for y'all real quick, and if there's any more news, if you want me to, but.
It doesn't automatically approve if you go over 60 days without a vote, does it?
As for a site plan, I'm not sure.
On a site plan.
That would be helpful for you to let us know, Corey.
I'm not so sure commercials write for it either, but I don't think industrials write for it.
I agree, too.
Hey, Robert, could I help with something?
Yes, please do.
We, we failed to get them. Well, we got, we got legal checking on that, though.
Okay. Y'all are making a recommendation to the city commission, so whether positive or negative, that looking can proceed on with the rezoning request. We just have other positive or negative recommendation from the planning commission, so keep that in mind as well.
So it's still going to the commission, right?
If there's no recommendation, it can still go to the city commission?
It could, yes, it can just go out a recommendation, which is, which doesn't provide your guidance to the elected officials.
Correct.
We need a motion, yes? Yeah, we need some type of motion.
Saying now we're going to send it to the city commission.
Oh, we can vote on it ourselves if someone makes it.
Regardless of how you vote, it goes to the city commission.
Right.
You vote no, you vote yes, you're giving direction to the city commission. It'll go to the city commission either way. Just like the other ones that you've done in the past.
I'll make a motion that we deny the request due to the fact that they did not give specifics on what was going on with property and because of public outcry. I have a motion?
I second.
I have a second. Do a roll call on this, please.
Commissioner Granberry?
Senator Commission.
Port Pugh?
Yeah.
Douglas Marshall?
Yes.
Jennifer Granber, Jennifer Granberry, Jennifer Graham?
Yes.
And John.
I'm a yes.
Okay. I'm so, that passes, the denial passes.
Okay, number seven, anticipation request.
There are none.
Number eight, site plan request?
None.
Number nine, old business?
No.
See another business?
No, sir.
And we have taken care of the board and staff. No, we hadn't, number 11, board and staff, I'm getting led on myself. Board and staff comments from anyone?
No, sir.
No, we took care of number 12, business comment. I hear a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Motion and a second. Thank y'all, have a good evening. Corey won't sit back because it's on special paper.
Because we're going to give it to you every time we have a lead.
Good thing.